Great. Okay, so the, the point of the study session is sort of, I guess, um, that. Oh, make sure you will mute.
I, um.
Madison? Yeah. Did you have a question?
Uh, no, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Um, so the purpose of the study session is first to go over the expectations for the exam. And then we'll take a look at the questions for the exam, which you should all have access to at this point. They were posted this morning at midnight, so you should be able to have access to those. But we'll go over the questions. And so we'll see that, we'll see if you have questions about the expectations for the exam. And then we'll also see if you have questions about the actual questions for the exam. And then at the end, if you have clarifications, or if there are certain concepts that you're struggling with, that you would like to go over, that we, you know, we can have some time at the end to sort of answer any questions you might have about concepts. So I'm going to go ahead and share our, my screen. All right, there we go. And let me bring us to our canvas site. There we are. Okay. And so as you probably already know, that if you find information about the midterm exam in these two places. And so the midterm exam questions, this is where we're going to have access to the midterm exam questions. And this arrow here, you can download the questions. And so you, you should have access to those. If you don't have access to those, let me know as soon as possible, but I haven't heard any complaints. So I'm, I'm assuming that students are, are get, able to get access to that. But we're going to start with the midterm exam information here. And so we'll talk about the expectations that I have for the exam so that you kind of know how to prepare for the exam and then also sort of how to set yourself up to get the best grade possible on the exam. Um, okay, so the, um, the exam, as you know, is an essay exam. And so it is open book, open notes, um, that as you'll see in a moment, there are six questions that are on the exam, and then you choose four of those questions to answer. Okay. And you have ample time to work on the exam. And so, um, you obviously have the questions now, and then you have until next Tuesday, the 26th. So this coming up Tuesday, um, the exams are due at 11:59 PM on Tuesday. So, you know, I kind of set aside a whole week for the midterm exam just to, I, I mean, I know online classes, well, all classes are a lot of work, but sometimes online classes can be, can get a little overwhelming. So I just wanted you to sort of take a breath and have a little time to sort of like not have to worry about quizzes and stuff for this week. And so that you could kind of like, you know, bring, have ample time to, you know, do a great job on the exam. Um, so the exam covers topics one through six, and that's what we've covered so far this semester. Um, you know, if this were an in-class task, I'd say, oh, look at the learning outcomes and the key terms for the exam. You can do that. But I mean, mostly when you get the question, you'll want to look at the question and then you'll want to figure out like, you know, the, identify the course material that best helps you answer that question as you're preparing for the exam. So, um, you know, reviewing key terms and learning outcomes is not as essential for the take-home exam as it would be for like the quizzes that we have. And also the, um, you know, this were in-class exam, which it's not. Um, and so the, the exam is worth 160 points, which is 16% of your final grade. As I said, it's open book, um, and you'll be answering four questions. So a lot of times students want to know about how long should their exam be? And so your exam should be a total of eight double-spaced typed pages. And so that would be two pages per answer. Okay. So that's, you know, look, when you look at the questions, that's about what, you know, that's about how long it's going to take, the amount of space that you're going to need and the amount of words that you have to use in order to effectively answer the questions. If it's a little less than a total of eight pages, that's fine. If it's a little more than eight pages, that's fine. If we're getting to 10, 11 pages, you're going to want to go back in and edit it down because that's too much. And if you're really answering these questions in less than a page, or really like even a page might be a little worrisome in terms of answering it in a comprehensive manner. You might want to go back and make sure, am I answering all the prompts? And I'm bringing up enough course material so like actually demonstrate that I understand this material. So just keep that in mind. But if you're able to do a great, you know, answer to a question in a page, then, um, then that's fine. You know, I mean, some people read, write really concisely, and as long as they're bringing evidence to support the points that they're making, you should be fine. So there's no hard and fast rule on how long it needs to be, but ballpark is about two pages for each question. And when I'm grading the exam, this is what I'm basically looking for. Very similar to the discussion question, that are discussions this semester where there are multiple prompts that you answer. Um, there are multiple prompts that you will be answering in the essay question. So make sure that you answer each of those prompts. Don't not answer one of the prompt, prompts. And in a second, when we look at the question, there are like these critical thinking prompts in the question, and you're going to want to make sure that you spend time answering the critical thinking prompts as well. So bottom line, answer all the prompts. Uh, the other thing is, is that you should use all of the course material to help support your answers to the question. Um, and so you'll want to rely upon the topic lectures, the, the relevant course commentary, um, the textbook and any articles that we've read this, so far, this, uh, this semester. And mostly those articles are used for discussion, but there might be some other articles that we haven't discussed in our discussions, but you could pull upon any of those supplementary articles. Uh, as it says here, you don't need to, and you don't need to use all of the resources for each question. You want to keep in mind that I'll be looking at this sort of comprehensively. So for one question, you might want to just rely on lectures and textbook. For another question in your answer, you might want to rely on textbook and an article that we read, right? Um, and so forth. And it is possible that for one answer, you might just want to depend on a lecture or depend just on the textbook. Okay. Um, but at the end of the day, I'm going to be looking and I'm going to say, hey, did you pull upon all of the elements, right? Articles, textbook, lectures, and even the course commentary. Okay. So keep that in mind as you're answering the questions, because that's something that I'm going to be looking for. Now you will note that there's no need to do external research outside of this class, right? I mean, the course materials are enough that for you to answer these questions. So there's no expectation that you would be like doing research on the web or in the internet or for other articles. That's not necessary, and it's also really not really advisable that you do that. Um, like everything, make sure it's written in a clear and easy to follow manner. Proofread, a couple of grammatical errors are fine and make them all the time, but just, you know, a lot. If it's standing in the way of communicating your ideas, then that would be problematic. And then finally, if you are using, as you will be using a course material, make sure you use in-text citations. Um, so you can say like women's rights in the United States, page 123, or topic five, lecture one. Okay, that's good enough. You don't need a works cited page or anything like that at the end of the essay. Exam. And as I was telling my other students, um, if you are using direct quotes, which is fine from a course materials, including lectures, um, one, you're going to want to make sure that those direct quotes are, are not huge. You want to make sure that they're like, you know, a targeted quote that you might be using. You don't want like, and you know, two paragraphs of quote from the textbook or articles, that's not going to, that's not something you should be doing. But if you are using direct quotes, you want to make sure that they're in quotation marks and that the page number and the source is identified. Because if you don't do that, then that would be considered plagiarism. Okay. So anytime you're using a direct quote, make sure it's in quotation marks. And if you're referencing an idea from the text or lecture, you also want to cite that. Although you don't have to put it in quotations, since you're sort of like paraphrasing or rewording the point that was made in the textbook. Okay. So those are the expectations. Let me stop the share here. And let me just open it up. Do you have any questions about the expectations for the exam? Anything you'd like me to clarify? And it's a small enough group, so I'm just going to go around. Eric, are you cool? Do you, do you understand those expectations?
Yep.
Tiffany, what about you? Or Erica, sorry. Tiffany?
I'm good.
Sydney?
Yes.
Haley?
I'm good.
How about Madison?
Yeah, I'm good.
Bella and Julia, you've heard this before, any questions?
I'm all good.
I'm good, too.
And Isabel?
I'm good.
All right, cool. All right, now let's take a look at the actual questions. Okay, so whoopsie daisy. Hold on just for a sec. Where'd y'all go? About that. All right, so let me share the screen again. All right. Where is? There. Got out of the way. Um, okay, so, uh, go to where you find the questions. So if you scroll down here, um, this is the area where the midterm exam questions are, and that's also where you're going to be submitting your answers. So you want to click here, um, if you want to view the midterm exam questions. And if you click on the arrow, then that will, that's how you download the questions. And obviously you're going to want to, you know, download the questions because, um, but you know, that's how you're going to be able to answer, read and answer the questions. Okay. So this is what the questions look like. This is what the document looks like. Um, so, you know, you want to review the midterm exam information that we just went over before you start the exam. Um, I mostly put that there for there for people who are not able or don't listen to the video for the, um, for the midterm exam study session. Just to reiterate, the exam is due on Tuesday, October 26th at 11:59 PM. You upload it as a document. When you get, when you download this document, the first thing you're going to want to do is you're going to want to save this document to your hard drive, your desktop, the cloud, or a zip drive. Because I've had a lot of students, not a lot, I've had some students in the past who failed to save the document, and then they work on it, and then they lose all their work. So make sure you save it, you know, like as midterm 231, put your last name. That way you'll be set and there won't be any like tragedies in terms of losing your work. Um, and then I want you to, um, uh, so here are the questions, we'll go over those. And you answer four of the following questions, four of your choice. Um, I want you to actually answer the questions right in the body of the document. Okay. And so that means that, you know, like blah, 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 right? That's where you start answering the question. I don't want you to answer it within the question, like describe what the term feminism, you know, what is meant by the term feminism? Making sure to address blah, blah, blah. Don't start, you know, answering there, don't answer it within the question. That's very hard for me to grade, but just start answering it below. And I do want you to include the, the, the question in your document. That's good for me as I'm grading it, but it's also good for you as you're writing it, that if the question is right there, you can reference it and make sure that the prompts, that you're answering all the prompts. So when you're, you know, make sure to include the question there. Um, and so let's go over, uh, question one. Oh, and if you're not answering question, you could just skip it or you can delete it. So let's say, hey, I'm going to do one, but I'm not going to do two. You can either strike through it, delete it, or just leave it blank and move on to the next question. Okay, so the first question, it has to do with feminism and also the application of feminism to the public policy process. So the question is, is describe what is meant by the term feminism? Making sure to address differences within feminism and how what it means to be a feminist has changed over time. So the hint there is we've talked about different types of feminism. We've talked about social feminism, radical feminism, and there's other feminisms that they talk about in the textbook. Um, we've used broad definitions of that feminism in some of the first lectures that we did. You can pull upon, you know, Roxane Gay's article and the way she talks about what it means to be a feminist, you know? You know, so there's no hard and fast, specific definition of feminism that I'm looking at for. I mean, it's sort of a, um, a summary of the different definitions of feminism that we've looked at in the class. Um, when it says that I want you to, uh, what it means to be a feminist and how that has changed over time, uh, make sure that you reference in lecture, there were the, there was information about the different eras of federalism, right? Or I'm not federalism of feminism. Um, so it's like, uh, you know, like the first wave of feminism and the second wave of feminism. I would expect you to included that information. And again, just sort of a general summary. And then the second part is thinking about the intersection of feminism and public policy. Uh, what role has feminism played in the public policy process? How has that role changed over time? And do you think it's useful for feminism to play a role in the public policy process today? Explain why or why not? And so this is an example of one of those critical thinking prompts. Do you think it's useful for feminism to play a role in the public policy process? You could say you think it is useful, you could say it's not useful. There's no right or wrong answer to that critical thinking prompt. But you just want to bring the evidence from our readings to make a case for why you think it's important that feminism should play a role in, in, in public policy. Okay. So that is the first question. Um, do you have any questions about question one? And I won't go person to person. Is there any clarification you'd like there? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the second question. Um, so there is, the topic two is dedicated to the public policy process. Um, and so this question has to do with that material. And so the process of public policy is a vital aspect of American government and politics. In this essay, I want you to describe the public policy process, making sure to explain the role policy communities, historical context, and the institutions of American government play in the making of public policy. Considering the different steps in the process, which step do you think, do you find the most important for making policy? Why explain? And again, that's where that, that's the critical thinking portion of this question. There's no right or wrong answer there. Well, I guess it would have to be right in that you actually have to identify a step in the public policy making process. So if you identify a step, that's not actually a step in the process, that, that would not be good. Um, but, uh, you know, the step that you choose, um, and make an argument for that this is like the most important step. So maybe it's problem identification. You're like, unless we identify a problem, articulate that problem and get it on the agenda, then we're not going to have policy. You could say policy evaluation. We've got the policy there, we want to see whether it's working, right? So whatever step you choose, um, that you will, um, you know, you'll make a case for why you think that, that step is most important. Uh, here you're going to want to pull on both the information from the textbook. Um, particularly as you're answering the question about historical context, policy communities. And in lecture, we, and, and then there's also the chapter from the, the, uh, the Robert By textbook of, about public policy. So you read that, and then also there's a lecture on it as well. So there's a lot of material to pull upon to help you answer that question. All right, so any questions about that question? All right, hearing none, let's go on to the third question. So there is both lecture material and also, um, textbook material, not from the women, the women's rights textbook, but there was that supplementary textbook about the Supreme Court and Supreme Court cases that have to do with gender equality. So you'd be pulling upon those, both the lecture and that supplementary textbook, um, chapter to answer these. And so as you know from lecture, um, in topic three, that there were a bunch, there were four cases that we covered. Reed versus Reed, Frontero v. Richardson, Craig v. Born, the 3.2 beer case, and, uh, the United States v. Virginia. I, I'll go back in there, I need to put a V there, I'll do it right now. Um, and I'll make sure I upload that. And that's the case that has to do with Virginia, VMI, the Virginia Military Institute. So in this question, I want you to pick, so of those four cases, you select the two that you think are most important in the effort to further gender equality in the United States. You could pick Reed v. Reed, because it's the first time that, even though they used a rational basis test and Reed v. Reed, they basically say, wait a second, you know, saying that a woman can't, you know, administer the state of, estate of her dead son, women have just as much ability to do that as men. You could say that's the most important case. You could say, uh, you know, from, from Frontero v. Richardson, because they almost used, you know, the strict scrutiny standard there, et cetera. So which do you think are most important in the effort to further gender equality in the United States? Why these two and not the others, right? So you want to say, hey, I picked Frontera and Craig. The reason I picked them, these was for this reason, and I thought that they were more important than Reed or the United States v. Virginia for these reasons. And in your answer, you want to make sure to describe the main facts of the case, the decision of the court, and the general importance of this case to gender equality. Uh, and so those summaries of the facts of the case were in lecture, but that, you know, there's more information in the, that textbook, that supplementary textbook reading that we were doing. So I would expect you to pull upon both of those things. Um, any questions about that question? I teach civil liberties, which we do a lot of case law, and that is one of my favorite classes to teach. I love teaching this class, too, don't get me wrong. So, uh, don't be scared to select the cases question. Um, I know Supreme Court cases can be daunting, um, but I think it's, they're so important to gender equality. So when you look at that, you might be like, oh, I don't feel comfortable handling a case. Well, um, you know, take a risk and I'd love to, you know, hear your answers to that question. Uh, number four has to do with, with suffrage. So the struggle for women's suffrage was long and diverse. Many, both men and women, did not support the ratification of the 19th amendment, which gave women the right to vote. Uh, first describe the antis, um, those folks who opposed the ratification of the 19th amendment. We talked about that in lecture, it's also in the article that we read. And of the different reasons that the antis gave for opposing ratification, which one, or you can choose more than one, do you think had, would have been most politically persuasive? That is politically persuasive to get people to say, nope, we're not going to amend the constitution to include the 19th amendment. Um, and you want to think about it in terms of early 20th century, right? So I mean, don't look at the antis and think, how would 21st century America respond to the claims that the antis were making about why women shouldn't have the right to vote? I mean, hopefully, although who knows these days, hopefully those, uh, those arguments would not be persuasive in 21st century America. How would they have, uh, think about the persuasiveness of those arguments at the, at, at the beginning of the 20th century? And then, um, in lecture, we talked about the two major reasons for, um, why the 19th amendment, um, should be ratified. Remember, we talked about that, um, it's the first step towards, uh, political and social equality for women. That was the, um, the first reason. The second reason was that women have special like concerns, and we don't necessarily want them to be politically equal, but we want their voice in the mix and giving them the voice is, it, it, giving them the voic, vote is the best way to get the women's block, the women's interest into, um, into our politics. And so describe those two major reasons, and given the time period, which of these two reasons do you think would be most effective in persuading people to support ratification? So that's the question, and I would expect you to pull upon the lecture, articles, course commentary, and those videos too that we watched. I mean, there were, there, there were those videos about, like, not from me, but from the, I think that from PBS, uh, American experience, you could pull upon those as well. Any questions about that question? All right, and the last two have to do with the last topic, topic six. And so, as you know, topic six, it dealt with abortion rights. And it also dealt with contraceptives. Um, and now I'm kind of spacing out, did we spend one week on contraceptive policy and one week on abortion policy? Somebody refresh my memory.
Um, it was the same week, I believe.
It was the same week, okay. I couldn't remember whether we did it in one week or two weeks. Um, so regardless, um, that the first question has to do with the contraceptives. And so the textbook describes three phases that illustrate the way contraceptives have been defined in and regulated by public policy. Um, and so, uh, remember that was like the, the private realm. Um, and then it was the, um, that it was illicit material, and then it was, um, or I guess it was private was actually not one of the phases. It was that, uh, uh, that contraceptives was illicit material. The contraceptives should be used, used for medical purposes, and that contraceptives should be, um, used for family planning. But you can include the private realm as well, right? I mean, so I, I say three, um, however I define that in lecture is the way that you should go and answer that question. But it would be okay if the private phase isn't like a specific phase, you could still use that as one of the three. Okay, I'd have to look back at lecture, I can't remember exactly how I, what, uh, what the distinct three phases was. Um, so describe each of these phases and include the historical and judicial factors that shaped these definitions and the way these definitions impacted access to contraceptives. And thinking of current access to and attitudes towards contraceptives, do these three phases definitions continue to shape contraceptive policy? Okay. Um, and so actually, just because I am kind of spacing out on those three distinct phases, let me just bring up that, that PowerPoint here, just so I'm not, uh, misleading you on what those three phases are. I mean, I know it's in lecture, I can't remember if the private phase is a distinct phase. So let's see, let me bring up the slide here for just one second, just bear with me. Let's see, topic six, lecture one. Okay, yeah. So it's contraceptives as obscene material is that first phase. Um, phase two is the contraceptives are not obscene, but prevent and treat disease. And then contracept, the, the, the third phase is that it serves as a tool for family planning. And then it's all sort of predicated upon that, that, I guess, a pre-phase, right? About it being sort of, um, uh, a, a private matter. So that's that summary of those three phases. Sorry, I kind of spaced out on that, it was all sort of blurring together for me. Um, and so let me bring it back to those questions there. There we go. And so you want to discuss those three phases, um, the, the obscene material, a treatment for disease, and then family planning. Describe each of them. And then when you think about where we are in terms of contraceptive policy today, um, you want to ask yourself, and, and what are contraceptives still treated? I mean, not by law, but do we think about them as so like obscene and dirty? And like, like, remember in that phase, it, it was sort of this idea that, um, that if we give people contraceptives, that they're going to be like, like having sex without consequence, and that's a bad thing, right? Do we see any of that in contraceptive policy today? Uh, do we see anything about it, the treatment for medical conditions? Um, do we see family planning as a part of how it is our current policy, our current contraceptive policy is like embraces that family pant, planning, um, and sort of female, women's equity sort of approach? Um, so sorry, that was kind of confusing there, but I'll play, clarify that up. Do you guys have any questions about the, the third policy? All right, I'm sorry, do you have any questions about question five? The three phases? All right, hearing none, let's move on to the last question. And so, um, the last question is about the evolution of abortion policy in the United States. And so the question is, describe how abortion policy has evolved in the United States, making sure to reference laws prior to Roe v. Wade, after Roe v. Wade, and then after Casey. Okay. And so, um, uh, so you're going to, you know, as we talked about in, in lecture, um, you know, prior Roe in the United States, that most states criminalized abortion, um, that you could only get an abortion if the life of the woman was in jeopardy. And if, if the life of the woman wasn't in jeopardy, then you could not get an abortion. Some states allowed it in case of rape or incense, but the vast majority pro-Roe abortion was criminalized. Um, I'm just going to ask a question here, just, you know, to see where you guys are at. What does Roe tell us about abortion policy? Before Roe, it was like states could criminalize abortion, could only get it if you were, if your life was in jeopardy. Can somebody, um, remind us in the class, what does Roe tell us about abortion policy? How does Roe change abortion policy? Anyone want to take a stab at that? Bella, you want to take a stab?
To me, it just kind of sets a precedent, but it's a woman's choice, and it doesn't matter what the situation is.
Yeah, exactly. And so it gives women the right to have an abortion. Um, I'm going to go with Julia now. Julia, are there, like, remember in Roe, they talked about the trimester framework? Um, do you remember what the trimester framework is? And, and what does that tell us? I mean, can I mean, can, could a woman today go in and have an abortion? Like, um, just on demand in the 38th week or the 35th week, could, 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 could you just go and have an abortion at the 38th week? Or um, does, what role does the state play in limiting access to abortion? And to get, does anyone remember what that trimester framework is and how that shapes abortion policy in the United States? I'm calling on Julia, but anyone want to add into there?
Um, it set it into like, well, with Roe, it set it into three trimesters, like the first, second, and third.
Yes.
Um, I, from what I remember, it also got like overturned like so that trimesters aren't really recognized as much, but it would, like in terms of a 38 week pregnancy, you probably can't go ahead and get an abortion at all because that's so far along. So the state wouldn't recognize it as like illegal abortion. They would think, oh, you're killing somebody because you're far along.
And as we read in that discussion, the article for the discussion, which I'll be grading, you know, soon, so you can get some feedback on that for the exam. Um, you still can get a late term abortion, but they're very hard to get, and it's only for the, like, really these extraordinary circumstances. So you're coming out of Roe, it was basically saying that prior to viability, um, that a woman can have an abortion with really, the state can't regulate abortions. Well, I mean, they can regulate it, but they can't basically elite, make it illegal prior to viability. But once that fetus is viable, then the state can start getting involved in regulating it, right? And the closer the fetus gets to viability, then basically like in that third trimester, it's okay for states to say, you cannot have an abortion unless your life is in jeopardy, right? And so Roe is basically saying that prior to viability, that you could have an abortion, the state cannot criminalize abortion. Uh, but after viability, then the state becau- because the fetus is more able to take, you know, survive outside of the the uterus, the state can get involved in regulating that almost and and to the point in late term abortions prohibiting it, right? Um, saying that you cannot have a late term abortion. Um, so with Casey, Casey gets rid as Julia states, gets rid of that trimester framework. Um, it's basically saying that um, that we're not going to look at the trimesters. Um, and basically it's saying prior to vi- after viability, the state can regulate or even prohibit abortions, right? They could criminalize abortions if they choose after viability, which is like the 24th week. But what's neat, interesting about Casey is they say, prior to viability, the state can put regulations in place um, such as sonograms, reading informed pamphlets, waiting periods, 24, you know, consent for minors. And as long as that doesn't present an undue burden, then um, you know, that uh, that states, as long as those regulations don't present an undue burden to the woman, a substantial obstacle to getting a a a an abortion, that's okay. Okay? And I just wanted to kind of go over that because it's, it's a little bit, you know, kind of difficult to understand. And I just wanted to kind of refresh your memory on that because that's what this question is about. So you're going to want to talk about laws prior row, laws after row, row, okay, and then after Casey. Because it's the Casey case, as it says there, according to Casey, abortion law is only invalid if it places a substantial obstacle in the path of a woman seeking an abortion prior to viability, right? Um, and 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 basically, the Supreme Court has only found, well, the, actually, that's a question on the exam, so I'll sort of leave it at that. Um, but you know, that it it says, according to Casey, abortion law is only invalid if it places a substantial uh, substantial obstacle in the path of women seeking an abortion. So explain what the court has and has not considered a substantial obstacle. Um, and what do you think about the Casey standard? Or do you prefer the standard in Roe? Basically saying, you, you know, that uh, the state really can't regulate abortion, can't have 24 hour waiting periods or sonograms or whatever prior to viability. Uh, do you think Casey goes far enough to protect a woman's right to privacy as it relates to abortion? Explain your answer. Or do you think waiting periods, sonograms, informed consent, uh, uh, consent for minors? Uh, do you think that that doesn't go far enough of protecting women's right uh, to privacy as it relates to an abortion? And then finally, there is a less than insignificant chance that Roe v Wade will be overturned by the 2021, 22 court term. They're hearing a case about the 15 week um, prohibiting abortion after 15 weeks this term. So if Roe is overturned, explain the impact that this would have on abortion policy. Okay? So that's the question. Um, and uh, uh, you know, there's a lot going on in that question because there's a lot of, you know, sort of cases, you know, the pre-Roe, Roe, and then Casey to understand um, in order to answer that question. Okay? Do you guys have any questions about that question? Or is there anything you'd like to go over as it relates to come uh, to abortion policy that you might need, like some clarification on? All right. So hearing none, I'm going to stop the share. Um, and uh, I'll just open it up and I, this time I'm going to go person by person, just to, you know, make sure. So Erica, is there any questions or concerns that you have or any concepts that you'd like to go over? Um, that would be helpful.
I think I'm good for now. I read over all the questions and like got all the material ready. Um, so if I have any, I'll definitely shoot you an email.
That would be great. Um, Tiffany, what do you think? How are you doing?
I think I'm good thus far. And the same thing, I'll probably text you or email you.
Excellent. Madison?
I don't have any yet, but if I do, um, I'll send an email.
Great. Haley?
Uh, yeah, I'm good for now.
Great. Sydney?
No, I don't have any questions.
And Julie and Bella, I'll just put you both there because you've been in, you know, other uh, sessions. Bella, do you have any questions?
I'm all good.
Julia, you good?
I'm all good too.
Okay, great. Um, and the final thing I'll say is just that obviously I'll be around. Um, you have a lot of time to work on this. So just shoot me an email, a text, um, whatever. Uh, and I'm here to help you. And also go with the questions you feel most confident with, right? Um, I know I was like, kind of encouraging you to do the cases, but if you're like, hey, that's not my, that I don't feel the most confident about that. You go with the four questions that you feel like you're going to like knock out of the park. Okay, so to use a baseball metaphor. All right. Well, um, thanks a lot for attending. I will post to this on um, on our canvas site for those who are, were not able to attend. And um, enjoy the rest, enjoy your weekend as you're working on your exams.
Wait, I have a, um, yeah, yeah, yeah. I have a quick question about the policy paper.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so like, I know we did the prelim thing, but I still don't know exactly like how to get going, start. Like, I'm unclear of how to start the paper.
Okay, cool. Good question. Um, and so let me, oh, shoot. Okay. Oh, let me share a screen. Okay. And let's, I mean, probably the best place to get started is let's take a look at the, um, let's take a look at our, at the assignment. Okay, so here is the the assignment for the policy paper. Okay? Um, so, I mean, you've, uh, what, what's the topic that you selected, Madison? Madison, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. I did the one where um, how we don't have enough women representation in um, Congress for it to be a fair, um, like, fair um, for writing public policies and stuff like that.
Right, right. I mean, and so the first thing you're going to want to do is, you know, just, you know, you begin doing that research and you sort of started doing that with the preliminary. Um, uh, you know, the preliminary worksheet. I mean, I would say the first step is, is that you're going to want to do research to figure out just the extent of the problem. Just how unrepresentative is the Congress as it relates to gender? Um, you'll want to, you know, explore like, what are the causes, like, why? And 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 some of this we did in discussion, like, why aren't there more women in Congress? I mean, uh, some of that has to do with the fact that we don't have term limits. And so once you're in office, you can stay in office for a really long time. And usually if you're in office, like you just keep, you know, get getting reelected. Um, and so other reasons that we explored are lack of public funding. A lot of women don't, it was so funny in the discussion as I was reading them and I asked the question about like, are you going to run for office? And everybody was like, oh, no, 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 like, uh, there's somebody who's better at it than me or like, I don't want to go there. And it's like, a lot of women don't run for office because they're like, there's somebody, another person who could do it better, you know, and it's sort of, so you, you know, explore sort of the extent of the problem and explain why you think this is a problem. Um, and so when you look at the components of the paper here, um, you know, the the first thing you wanted to do is describe a description of the public policy issue, including the context and the importance of why this is a public policy uh, uh, problem. Uh, and so, you know, to start the paper, you, you know, like, that's supposed to be two pages long, do research like, and 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 make it and think about the argument for why the lack of representation is is problematic, right? And and some of that we've already covered in class, right? Women law are different types of lawmakers. They're more likely to address, you know, women, concerns of women's and families. And then, you know, the next is describe and evaluate the current existing policy that's in place that's designed to address this, this problem. Um, and for for your topic, right, there really isn't a public policy in in place. Like, there's, like, we don't have quotas, we don't have really good public financing, we don't have ranked voting, or or we do in a couple of states, right? But there's really no significant public policy that addresses closing the gender gap. I mean, it, parties try to do it, right, um, by like, getting up field teams, you know, like, like, like in the minor leagues, you know, you have women like, hey, like, run for state legislature, whatever. Um, but for your, for your instance, there's really not public policy. Now, for the others of you who are writing the public policy paper, like, there's existing policy and you're going to want to describe that existing policy and what, like, explain why you think it's problematic. So again, um, um, you know, for you, Madison, you know, you're going to it explain the problem, but there's really not a policy in place that is um, uh, that addresses that problem. And it says, if no current policy exists, explain why it's important to adopt a policy to address this problem. Okay? And so one or two pages there. And then you want to do research, more research on the two alternatives to um, the current policy. Uh, and so I I don't, I don't remember from your worksheet, but were you supportive of like quotas and rank choice voting, or what were the two alternative policies or, in this case, are not alternatives, but like, what are the two policies you selected that you thought would um, close the gap?
Yeah, I liked, I really liked the rank choice voting one.
Yes.
And then um, uh, my second one was probably going to be quotas. I just hadn't decided yet.
Yeah. And so to get going on the paper, you'll want to do more research. I mean, we touched on quotas in our discussion, but there's a lot of information out there about other countries that have used quotas, why they use them, the impact that they've had. And I think one of the arguments that I like about quotas and and I, quotas are now we're going to be adopted in the United States, but it doesn't matter. You could still make an argument for why, why we should adopt them. And one of the arguments I like is that with quotas, it's sort of like, like, men are running against men and women are running against women in a way, right? It's so, it's sort of like, like, if we don't have quotas, then it's sort of like, like, maybe some candidates that are not the best candidates run because we have these sort of gender biases in place. But if we have quotas, it actually like, um, it'll push the most, um, the the most qualified men up to the top. And it'll also push the most qualified women up to the top, right? Um, and it might just overall increase the, like, the quality of our representatives if we had quotas. But anyways, to get back to the, you know, how to prepare for the paper, do research on your two um, alternative policies. Um, and that's two to three pages long. And then, you know, you just think about, you 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 know, you're making a recommendation to a lawmaker, right, to a government official, you're trying to convince them to adopt ranked voting or to adopt quotas. Um, and so that you'll want to recommend one of these two policies of providing a rationale. Also, in, you know, in that other section, in section three, you're going to want to talk about the strength and weaknesses of each of your options. Um, and then, you know, the last part is that you make a recommendation, you're trying to like persuade them to adopt ranked voting or, you know, or adopt quotas. Uh, you want to use research throughout, it has bibliography, et cetera. And so, you know, uh, those were a lot of words that I kept saying there. So sorry, I'm talking so much, but I I mean, probably the best thing to do is, you know, start doing the research necessary to like, make a robust argument for why quotas and ranked choice voting are the best ways to close the gap. You want to be really well versed on why that gap exists. And then you just, you know, sort of need to think about of those two, what's going to be a persuasive argument to um, convince the lawmaker? Um, and so it it's really a targeted sort of guided essay. You can even, or not essay, but policy paper. You can even just say part one, part two, part three, part four. You don't need like an introduction or conclusion or anything like that. Does that help? Madison?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Great. Um, and uh, and hopefully that was helpful for others too, because I know that, you know, that paper was due like November 9th. So before you know it, you know, um, it it'll be due. So a- also as you're working on your paper, if you guys want to have one-on-one Zoom office hours, it's totally fine too. I'm I'm here to help. All right. Any other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Excellent. Well, you guys have a great weekend and I really appreciate your time and I will talk to you again soon. Bye bye.